I want to address the issue of the anti-discrimination ordinance. Appreciate the chance to speak. Like I said, I'm Mike Williams. I'm a lifelong member of the community. I've operated a small business in town for right at ten years. This proposed law presents an ironic twist, which is actually, I feel like it would create more discrimination than it would prevent because while professing to discourage discrimination against a small segment of our community, it would actually encourage discrimination against a larger segment of our community, those who have different convictions than those promoting the law. If this law were enacted, the city council would be complicit in the discrimination. It's not correct to say, as supporters of these laws do, that a vote in favor of the law opposes discrimination when in reality it increases that very thing. This proposed law would also infringe upon liberty, religious and otherwise, by elevating the demands of a few over the convictions of many. This city council should refuse to impose this kind of discrimination on its citizens, choosing instead to promote liberty by protecting people's freedoms, freedom to live consistent with their convictions and faith. This proposed law can also be viewed as a violation of human dignity. This law attacks the dignity of all people who affirm beliefs or convictions against the behavior it promotes. By one, labeling people, these people, as discriminatory simply because of their beliefs; or two, demonizing or outlawing their attempts to live according to those beliefs; and three, trying to push people with those beliefs to the outer fringes of society. Finally, this proposed law forces the city council to take sides in a profound moral debate, and for that reason alone, it should be rejected. This measure embodies an official and unyielding government stance declaring that any citizen who acts consistently with his or her belief that a moral distinction exists between heterosexual and homosexual conduct is evidencing irrational and unlawful prejudice. This moral issue is not for government to decide. Government should refrain from imposing, as this law would, any penalty on any practices associated with any of the various individual views on homosexuality. I believe that a very dangerous trend lately is mandating actions and beliefs under the threats of penalty. I mean, why stop here? Why not mandate that any form of deviant behavior has to be accepted despite others' personal beliefs? It would sure open up a Pandora's box when it, that could include anything from bestiality to pedophilia. I would hope that this city council would not use its power to favor, promote, or advance one moral position over the other. I would rather see you steer clear of this moral debate regarding homosexuality and refuse to impose the weight of the law against individuals who desire to remain true to their convictions or their faith teachings about sexual morality. Those of us who desire to live as we are compelled by God, our Creator, have as much right to be fairly represented as those who don't feel the same. In conclusion, the proposed law has the potential to create far more problems than it would cure, in my opinion, including additional discrimination, trampling of liberties, and violations of First Amendment rights. For all these reasons, I strongly urge the city council to reject the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
My name is Violet X. Ozenzki, and I am the president of the Gay Straight Alliance at the Kirksville High School. And I think it's very important that nobody be discriminated against in this town. I think it's important that you, I would love it if you would put this up for a revote because, sorry, this is very scary. I think it's setting a very bad example as you as adults, telling people that not everybody should be protected, not everybody should, I don't know, have the same. Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Just take a breath.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is very scary. I wouldn't, I want to feel like Kirksville is a very safe environment for everybody. And I don't, not having everybody's rights be protected makes me not want to stay in Kirksville. And I think it would make a lot of people not want to stay in Kirksville. I think it just, it makes Kirksville seem like a very unacceptable place. And I just, I don't want, like, the people in GSA, in the Gay Straight Alliance, to feel like as soon as they're out of high school, they need to leave Kirksville because it is not a safe place for them to stay. And I just would really like it if you guys would bring this, bring the anti-discrimination discriminatory policy up for a revote and really think about the example you're setting for the youth in Kirksville.
My name is Brandon Eigner. I currently reside at 315 South Ellison Street, Kirksville, Missouri. I was here at the first city council meeting when you discussed it, probably more than a month ago. And I heard a lot of interesting things from certain city council members and a lot from people that live in the community. I wanted to address a couple of issues that maybe haven't been brought up or that didn't get explained fully from both sides of the debate. I grew up in a very religious family, and I have heard all of the religious arguments. I was very religious, and I was very religious in that way, at least. I was part of the Southern Baptist community in St. Peters, Missouri. I was very self-hating because of the way that they taught us to think about gay people, and I knew that I was gay from probably the time I was eight. The way that the church viewed me was very negative, and I've heard some of those things voiced here, specifically with reference to Sodom and Gomorrah. One of the city council members said, "Go home and read your Bibles. Go home and read the story of Sodom. You will know exactly what God thinks about you." I did go home and I did read my Bible. Again, I have read it all the way through, and I don't think that that can be said for most of the people in this community. Someone said that the sin of Sodom and Gomorrah was homosexuality, which ultimately was the reason that God judged and destroyed the cities. When I did read my Bible, I went to Ezekiel 16:49. It states, "Behold, this was the iniquity of thy sister Sodom, pride; fullness of bread and abundance of idleness was in her and her daughters; neither did she strengthen the hand of the poor and needy." This verse lists four different sins of Sodom. Not one of them was homosexuality. That is very clear to me. There were those who spoke against the ordinance who said there was no problem to fix. "Go to the police," they said. "This problem should be handled by the police." While the police enforce the law, if there's no law in place to enforce, they have no reason to do so. Someone else said that there was no discrimination in Kirksville, that this was a non-issue. But think about this, and I have had personal experience with this, as have several of my friends. Members of a cult or church, whatever you want to call it, that goes by the name Life Church in town, have verbally and physically harassed my friends. There's no law to, well, I'm sure that there's a lot of prohibit assault. However, people who are in my situation, who are LGBT and experience this from members of a religious community, feel pressured not to report it. This problem exists, but I don't think that anyone has actually been able to bring it forward to anyone on the city council or to the police, as if the police would do anything about it anyway. Oh, I also know for a fact that members of this church are business owners in Kirksville, and I think that the chance of them hiring someone who is openly LGBT is quite slim, not based on their merits, but based on their sexuality, because they have a very, very hateful nature towards those people. Lastly, one man said that it was no business of anyone what our sexual orientation was, since nobody asked whenever you were trying to get a job. People make assumptions of sexual orientation regardless of whether you are consciously aware of it. At work on a daily basis, I hear the words, "My wife, my husband, oh, my husband made me a sandwich," or "My wife, oh, we got this ring when we were in Hawaii." I hear the words, "Don't shove it in our faces. Don't say boyfriend in front of me." But I do get heterosexuality shoved in my face all the time, though I wouldn't describe it that way. I would say, "It's just conversation. You make friends with your coworkers, and you talk about the people who are important to you." What you're asking me to do is essentially to be silent about someone who's very important to me. You're asking me to be silent about someone with whom I have been for two and a half years of my life and who happens to be a man. Please think about what I've said. Take the time to make the right decision. These are my views on the issue. Thanks.
I'd also like to talk about the human rights proposition. Pardon me? What was your name? Elijah Mitchell. And you have my letter. I'm going to read it to you now. "I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak today regarding the human rights proposition. I would ask plainly that you not be in favor of the proposed ordinance. To pass such would result in effect the granting exclusive interest group the equivalent of what our nation's founding fathers regarded as a title of nobility or favored class among the common people. This would violate their wishes and wisdom. For they, by long experience and historical observation, had seen that a small nobility or ruling group of human beings, being inherently imperfect, was prone and in fact, set to be on a course resulting only in tyranny. In relation to the formation of the Constitution of the United States, the Honorable John J. once wrote, 'Like men to whom the experience of other ages and countries had taught wisdom, they not only determined that it should be erected by and depend on the people, but remembering the many instances in which governments vested solely in one man or one body of men had degenerated into tyrannies.'" Some supporters fear of discrimination on and off the job, but we have federal and state laws already that prohibit discrimination. Some declare this proposition will encourage an influx of business. But to say that businesses will be more inclined to come to Kirksville due to gay or lesbian freedoms makes no more sense than to plant tropical plants here expecting it will bring warmer weather. This is nonsense. From my discussions with owners of businesses, investigations of population size and competitions for their success are the primary factors. It is not on the basis of sexual orientation. To make such a claim is ludicrous. The underlying issue here is not to boom business, but is a sinister push for an exclusive preferential status or nobility above an already equally common status. This ordinance, if approved, will have the casual ability to condemn businesses and drown them in lawsuits if a citizen claims victimization, contradictive of their claims to help grow business. These lawsuits will be, at best, a result of prejudiced disappointment and, at worst, a spiteful effort to create dissensions and intrigue, thus disrupting business. This proposition, under the disguise of charity and sincere implications, will instead be used in biased and pernicious ways, much like a bully with a club to the corrupted delight of such a bully. This is in agreement with history and the founding fathers' observations of and efforts to prohibit such nobilities. It is not my personal view. Even Abraham Lincoln once said, "Nothing should even be implied as law which leads to unjust or absurd consequences." In the Federalist Papers #39, James Madison defines what a republic is to be, and of such he writes, "It is essential to such a government that it be derived from the great body of the society, not from an inconsiderable proportion or favored class of it." To pass this ordinance is to dishonor the efforts of James Madison. Mr. Madison continues by writing, "Could any further proof be required of the republican complexion of this system, the most decisive one might be found in its absolute prohibition of titles of nobility, both under federal and the state governments." Now, I'm not inferring or suggesting that no one can choose to be gay or the like. That is their choice and freedom, thanks to our founders. All I seek to convince you of is that the founding fathers designed our nation in such a way as to prohibit a law granting a select group any authority over a people designed to be free. And if you treasure the efforts of our founders, you can hear their words in mind. So again, I ask you to vote down this proposition. I will thank you, the more general population will thank you, and the founding fathers will be honored by you in keeping their efforts intact. Please vote no. You will be honoring their sacrifices and efforts in the hope that we, their descendants, would live free from tyranny. Don't let their efforts die in vain. Please vote no. The legacy and memory of our founding fathers, which you carry at this very moment, is depending on you for survival. It is more than your option. It is your constitutional obligation to vote no, both now and forevermore. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Nell Davis. I'm here to speak on the gay rights, the human rights ordinance and to speak in support of it, that you should vote yes for it. After going through four years of listening to my classmates make fun of other classmates, calling them fairies and fags, I think it's clear that there is a lot of discrimination going on, and it's in the workplace, it's in the home, and it's getting into the high schools. I don't think that's okay. I think voting yes for this ordinance would set a big example to everyone that we're not okay with being cruel to people because this is their lifestyle. Theirs diversity is, it rules, and we need to accept that. So I would like to ask you to please vote yes for the human rights ordinance. Thank you.
Gentlemen, ladies, many others who are more eloquent than myself have come up and spoken well for both sides thus far of the same ongoing argument. There are some things I would like to bring up. I do not stand in, I do not condone the alleged behavior of, you know, the religious community expressed earlier, a couple, a few gentlemen ago, a few speakers ago. I'm sorry, my name is Nate Burns, 914 West Burton Street, right by Casey's. All right. Well, anyway, anyway, a lot has been said of fear, social awkwardness, fear of losing jobs, both here, here last month, in the study session as well. I can actually sympathize with the arguments on both sides. As a born-again evangelically-minded Christian, speaking of Jesus is a big part of my life. It's who I am. It's a choice that I've made. It is a part of my being. It's what I do. It's what I am. In the private sector, in the corporate sector, in the government sector, I've held jobs in all three. And you bring up the name of Jesus, and the tone of things changes greatly. You can talk about on Monday about your escapades over the weekend, but the moment you bring up Jesus or your church, you're wasting company time. As a substitute teacher in the school system, you bring up Jesus, you bring up your church, you bring up the gospel message of Jesus Christ, and you will quickly find yourself in peril of not being asked back again. As a former member of the military, I'm aware of, I try to pay attention to what's going on with our military. Today, if you mention that even that you're a Christian, you quickly find yourself in peril of being processed out, regardless of your performance or regardless of how long you've been in. A gentleman earlier mentioned that he doesn't like having to be quiet about someone that he loves that's been a part of his life for two and a half years. Well, you know what? Jesus has been a part of my life for over thirty. He has done more for me than anyone else. And in the schools, it's prohibited. In social situations, it is awkward. You want to turn something awkward, mention Jesus or pull out a Bible. I'm familiar with it. It's a part of me. But I'm not about to ask for special favors. I don't want special favors. And I don't think it's right to grant special favors to one group because of their decisions any more than it is to grant it to others. I have no special favors in the government. And in fact, I have, as a member of the public schools or if I were still in the military, I would actually have things against me for the choices that I make regarding my identity as a Christian. And it was mentioned a school teacher, that's fear of losing her job. I get that. I'm in the same boat. But what I don't need is an extra ordinance for something that does not exist, as was admitted during the study session. And I had something else, but I lost it, and if you know me, that's common. But I thank you for your service, and thank you for listening, and I hope you make a wise decision.
So we had a lesbian working force, and we treated her with dignity and respect. We paid her, and, you know, we got along fine. But I don't see any, you know, we get to multiply on these laws. You can't, you can't make a law for everything and just keep going and going and going. There comes a point where you just gotta live according to the Bible and treat people with dignity and respect. Because it's like your former councilman said, you know, you have two people, and one of them is homosexual or lesbian, and the other one's straight, then do you, you know, how do you choose? It makes it kind of tough. The young man that said that about Sodom and Gomorrah, anything that you put in front of God is an idol, anything. You understand that? Anything that you put in front of God is an idol, whether it's a car, sex, whatever, you know? So I believe that in Ezekiel, I believe that he, I believe very strongly that Sodom and Gomorrah was destroyed because of homosexuality, and in Ezekiel, in Ezekiel, it might be a little vague, but it was an idol to the homosexuals on that. And so I just, I'd like to say I disagree with his version. I do, I'm a little nervous about this, but it is God's word. Says, "Result of guilt. Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness through the lusts of their own hearts, to dishonor their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God into a lie, and worshipped and served the Creator, the creature, more than the Creator, who is blessed forever. Amen. For this cause, God gave them up into vile affections, for even their women did change the natural use into that which is against nature." And it goes on to say the same thing about men. There is something natural about a man and a woman. You have children, you reproduce. Marriage and family is the building block of society. You know, I don't have to worry about getting a disease. I've been married for thirty years. I don't have to worry about that. I've been, what's the word when you've only had one partner for thirty years? Huh? Monogamous. I've been monogamous. You know, the Bible doesn't just condemn homosexuality either. It condemns anything outside of marriage between a man and a woman. So I don't want to be prejudiced towards one thing. So I don't, I don't like conflict, but I don't like conflict at all. If you knew me, you'd really know that. But sometimes a guy's just gotta get up and try to tell the truth.
My name is Sarah Mitchell. I'm a business owner in town, and after hearing about what was put before the council, I became gravely concerned. I, by law, can only have four employees before paying a tax that I can't afford. I would like to have more employees, but I can't. It's the law. I receive between six and twelve applications for a job at my location every week. I file most of them. People's chances of getting a job at my location are very slim, not because I'm prejudiced, but because I just don't have room by the law. I am concerned that the passing of such an ordinance would give way for speculation that I was practicing all kinds of dissension against other people, when really it's I don't have room and I don't have the money to employ them. Law enforcement and lawyers and such aren't cheap, and I've had to pay for a few here recently with another situation. And I know that even if this were brought to court a few times, if some people were disgruntled, even if it was one per week or one per month, within a very short amount of time, I would be bankrupt, even if I were found innocent, which would be true, because I have full faith in the US judicial system. The truth would come out, and I would be found innocent of not discriminating. But the cost would still be there, the time lost would still be there. To pay for employees to cover me while I'm out of the shop would still be there, and within a short order of time, I would fear that my business would go bankrupt, and not only mine, but many others. I have a rule with many of my, you know, a few of my employees that I have, and we don't all agree on all topics, and we talk very openly. And our rule is, you don't have to agree with one another, but at the end of the day, you still have to be friends. And I would hope that that could be law enough here, and we don't need any kind of ordinances to inflict this. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Andrew Robey. In all modes of thought, secular, atheistic, and theistic, the cornerstone of liberty is the golden rule. Treat others as you would like to be treated. Love thy neighbor as thyself. In a free society, we must recognize the right of others to live the lives they have been granted as they see fit, and to honor the choices made by those individuals as firmly as we honor our own. It is imperative, therefore, that we leave individuals to decide of their own free will and conscience what is right, rather than use the law to coerce approval of our own choices. I stand with the council members who voted down the last Human Rights Commission proposal, and I urge others to do the same for the following reasons. First, it is inherently undemocratic. Second, it infringes upon the rights of property owners. And third, the nature of the proposal itself is faulted. First, inherently undemocratic. The reduction of the commission's members from nine to one guarantees the impossibility of there being a representative sample of the Kirksville community. Furthermore, whatever its size, there is no popular oversight provided for of the activities of the commission, allowing a public entity to take legal action against a private citizen based on nothing more than an accusation of discrimination. Second, it infringes upon the rights of property owners to act as their conscience dictates, instilling instead in them a fear of retribution for living out what they believe to be right. This town is small, the margins are narrow, and even if legal defense were done pro bono, the time consumed in court has a value that cannot be recompensed. Third, the nature of the proposal itself and the reason underpinning it are self-destructively faulted. For one thing, it unfairly assumes that certain groups are systematically disenfranchised in Kirksville. It is true, it covers groups that have historically been disenfranchised due to their physical or mental handicaps or their race or ancestry. For these groups, who bear prejudice based on their nature and not on their actions, we already have protections backed by state and federal authority. Furthermore, the proposal seeks to equate a lifestyle choice, intended to improve the happiness or capacity of the individual with traits that cannot be chosen or changed, some of which are actively detrimental to happiness and capacity. Clearly, the two are not the same and ought not have the same protection. This is not to say that choices are undeserving of some protection, for after all, religion is a choice that has enjoyed freedom in its exercise from the outset of our nation. Yet even that freedom of exercise has been subject to limitations over the course of history. But while religion has been politically present almost from the dawn of humankind, the concept of gender identity and sexuality as a choice is a new animal in the political forest, and as such, must stand on its own merits, rather than lamely piggybacking on justifications made for different struggles in different times. Every member of every group here is reminded that as you judge, so shall you be judged. What goes around comes around. I ask that we replace violence and hatred with love and civil discourse. Let us endeavor not to hurt or disturb in any respect the happiness of our neighbors. With luck, or by God's providence, however you want to see it, we will all arrive at an understanding neither coercive nor discriminatory, which bears the blessings of liberty and justice in our town. God have mercy on us all. Thank you for your time.
I'm David Garth, and...
Uh, I'm David Garth, and, um, one thing that's, I think, has been lost in this discussion. Um, I think there are actually two issues here with this ordinance. Um, one is the creation of a human rights commission or officer, and the other is the addition of sexual orientation to the nondiscrimination policy. Uh, regarding the human rights officer, I'm, I'm a little, I'm uncomfortable with this, this idea of this officer. And I'd like to ask the question rhetorically. If, if sexual orientation were not on the table, um, would, uh, would the, would the council think that this is something a human rights officer is, is necessary, uh, in the city? And I, I, I don't know, I doubt it, but I, I don't know for sure. We currently have a statewide human rights condition. Uh, and according to their website, last year, they saw thirteen hundred and sixty-one complaints. And again, rhetorically, has the council considered any, uh, data on the number of the complaints at the state level that have come from the Kirksville area? Such data might show whether or not there's really a problem of discrimination, uh, in Kirksville. If discrimination is not a problem in Kirksville, uh, I wonder, does this human rights officer exist solely for the purpose of, uh, policing sexual discrimination based on sexual orientation? And regarding sexual orientation, uh, if you think of the major employers in this town, Truman, AT Still, Walmart, Kraft, other chains, uh, all of these entities include sexual orientation in their nondiscrimination policies. Uh, you won't get fired for sexual orientation at these employers who employ a vast majority of the people in this town. So the fear of, of being fired cannot be that widespread. And I'm a little leery of the, of the reasoning that says, well, we don't know, uh, how bad it is because it's, there, there, there's no ordinance, we need to pass this ordinance to find out how bad it would be. I, I don't, I don't agree with that. Um, if this ordinance is passed, then complaints of discrimination, if any, uh, are likely going to fall against small business owners. Um, I know a lot of small business owners here in town and they, and they work, they work very hard. And, and I think voting no on this ordinance will help, uh, small businesses now. I heard in the, in the study session that you're gonna be looking at the policy and changing the wording and, and, and all that. One clarification I would like to have considered as you change the, the language of this for the future. Uh, the state, uh, ordinance on, uh, human rights has a list of definitions, as does this ordinance on, uh, human rights has a list of definitions. And there are some definitions, uh, such as disability in the local ordinance that are lifted directly from the statewide ordinance. And then there are other, uh, definitions that are absent, like the, the definition of an employer is absent. And I'm, I'm confused or concerned about that absence of the definition of an employer. And I would think, I would like to see if you are gonna reword the wording of this. I think it would be important to consider that, uh, the state, uh, ordinance defines an employer as anyone who hires more than six people. And I think that, that that, while I still disagree with putting sexual orientation into the policy, I think that would at least protect small businesses, uh, more. I'm also concerned about how charges of discrimination will be proved. I've been on hiring committees at Truman, and it's never the case that we have just one candidate for the job. We usually have about five, and, uh, all of them are good. We like to hire them all, and, uh, we have to pick, pick one of them. And so suppose I apply for a job in town and I go to a Mormon employer, and he doesn't hire me, he hires another Mormon. Uh, how are we going to prove discrimination? I'm afraid it might come down to a situation like this. Suppose that, uh, he has ten employees working with him. Seven of them are Mormon and all of them are good workers. How can you really prove discrimination? I'm afraid that someone might, might cry discrimination because of the, just the percentages of, of people working in a certain, uh, for a certain employer. And I think that would be micromanaging, um, the small business practices of this town. Uh, finally, I think there's a deeper issue here that this ordinance can't fix. I hear a lot of people coming up and expressing their fears of discrimination. I really don't see fear of discrimi-, uh, fear of being fired in this community as a valid fear. I think the real fear that people have is a fear of not being accepted. It's a fear of not being, the fear of being judged, uh, by people who disagree with them. And I can sympathize with this fear, I really can, I, I really can. Um, I just think that an ordinance is not going to alleviate that fear. And I think that there's a lot of goodwill in this town towards people of differences. And I think that voting no will keep that goodwill alive. Thank you.
My name is Xavier O'Brien, and, um, I'm a student at Truman. I'm gonna keep this short and simple, I didn't really have anything prepared. But, um, in regards to the previous speaker saying that, um, he didn't believe the threat of being fired, the threat of unemployment was a large threat, I feel that as long as it is a threat to any person, that I feel that nobody should have to work and have any fear at all of being without a job or evicted and because of their sexual preference. I feel that being straight, if I were to be fired because I like women, I, I don't think that's right. And to people who have been quoting the Bible, I feel that another quote works well, and it's due unto others as you would have to be done unto you. And personally, I feel that I think everybody should be able to live their life that they would like to live without fear of retribution. Thank you.
My name's Tony Ficus, and, uh, you know, I went to the study session the day I was listening to things going on. I just wanted to make a few comments as you're looking at this ordinance. I know you have a hard job, this is not an easy situation to have people on both sides. There's a lot of feelings involved, and I know you have to sort out feelings and facts and where reality is and those things. So, so I looked through the amendment as it's been changed, cuz it keeps evolving, you know? Which should tell you something is, because if it has to keep evolving, then there's something not right about it, right? But in the Article Four, Section Ten Seventeen on public accommodations, which is brought up on that issue, you know, it came up today. If you're looking at other places where that kinda language has been applied, cuz it's fairly vague, okay? You, you will find in some cities where this has gone on, where they do have problems, this is brought up, where men have gone into women's restrooms, men who believe that they are really more women than men. And had, and they have used this law and this kind of vague wording, because it comes down to discrimination. How do you discriminate? Is it a discrimination issue when you don't allow a man to go into a woman's restroom? Now typically, we say that that's not gonna be an issue, we, we have laws to protect that. But this, this will supersede some of those situations. I have a friend who lives in a city where this law is in effect. He wrote me and said one thing, he said, "Last month, a man walked into the gym at GB Three", which is where he goes, stripped down in the women's locker room because he thinks that he's a woman with all of these women in there, and there was nothing anyone could do. That used to be against the law, but now the law protects it. So you need to find a way to reword or take out that section because you're gonna have problems. I, I know that wouldn't be your intent as a council, you would not wanna subject our children to situations like that. I know you better than that. So you need to read this and understand that if it's vague and not clear, then discrimination could be used in this situation for, because who's gonna decide about bathrooms and what's discrimination and what's not discrimination? So you need to consider this closely. Another issue like that, another issue is sec-, Article Three, Section Four, uh, Ten, actually Forty-One, dealing with employment. There's an exemption in there for churches and religious organizations, church schools, daycares, you know that one, okay? Now, so, so as a Christian, as long as I'm in a church, for instance, okay, my rights are protected within that group. But when I walk outside of my building, all of a sudden, my religious freedom goes away if I'm in the business community. A- as an example, say someone in your church, a lady wants to start a, a daycare. And so she has it, she wants to run it according to her Christian beliefs, and she believes because of that, that, that she's tolerant of other people and other situations, but she doesn't wanna have them working for her with children that she has. That's just her religious belief. This law would preclude that. If she needs to hire somebody, she would have to consider somebody from the GLBT community for that hot person that she hires, even though her religious beliefs or that's not gonna be the best thing for her children, the children that she oversees. She, if a person wanted to start, start a bookstore, a Christian bookstore, and they say, you know what, I have certain family values based upon our religion, and because of my family values, I, I wanna have certain kind of people employed in it. Once again, if I take my religious beliefs outside of church into a situation of business, you're telling that person that they don't have the right anymore in terms of overseeing their business to set the atmosphere that they want. As it's worded today, you would preclude that and you would have a lawsuit. So you need to think about the wording that you have here. If you're really meaning to, what you're doing, it's a violation of the constitutional rights of these people. Their, their religious freedom to, that goes outside the doors of their churches. You know, it's not just Christians, Muslims would feel the same way, and other people. There are other people who have concerns about these lifestyles and said, this is not a healthy lifestyle. I don't, I'm tolerant of it, but I just wanna promote it. And you're saying, by the way, this is worded right now, that, you know what, when it comes to your business life, we don't care about your religious beliefs anymore. That's gonna be a problem. So there's no, there's also no exemption, no exemption at all for the housing side of things in terms of it. So if a church owns a building and they decide to rent out to people because they have, you know, they're, they're, they're working with lower income families or, I mean, a variety of reasons. It could be a Bible college they have. You're telling them, well, when it comes to housing, that they have to let anybody, anybody from this group, because housing's not exempted at all. So that anybody could come into, and then do that church housing, rent from them, and they'd have to let that happen. No, no exemption on the housing situation. Either for groups, churches, or for individuals, once again. So you have some, 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 there is some, I think, some big holes in, in the way it's worded right now that's gonna get the city in trouble. I, I'll leave you with an equation. The, the cost of what this is going to cost you in real dollars is proportional to the problem that you have. If you have a problem here with this, then the cost, when you enact this, will be extremely high. Because you have a bunch of people that are, that are discriminatory, and they're gonna fire people and do all kinds. You will have a, if, but if you don't have a problem, then the cost will be low. So then I remind you about the people that have spoken so far on the side of the, the gay lesbian, and they have said, you know, this is not gonna cost you much, this, this will not be a problem in the community. I tell you the reason why it's not gonna be a problem, cuz we don't have a problem. But if we had a problem, if we do, it will cost you proportionally to how big the problem is. Thank you for your time.
I'm Boyd Halford. I'm an evangelist. And, um, I just wanna say a words. Most of you, a lot of you know who I am, so you've met, have known me. Been in this area for nearly fifty years. Nineteen fifty-seven. Let me back up. I came here in nineteen sixty-two, or sixty-seven, rather. I pastored churches and started a youth camp, ran a youth camp for forty-one years. We saw over twenty thousand young people come through the camp. I've traveled nearly two million miles in evangelism. But as I sat here tonight and I looked forward at the crowd, my mind went back, back flashes of when I, nineteen fifty-seven. As a fourteen-year-old boy, I weighed a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty-three pounds or six foot. That's when I learned to fight, because in, I lived in San Francisco, and you know what San Francisco's like. I said, "Do you know what San Francisco's like?" I said, "Do you know what San Francisco's like?" Then I moved from there to Hollywood, California, lived on Hollywood Boulevard. That's when I learned how to fight. Because of the homosexual crowds that kept trying to harass me and, and rape me. I went through this, went night after night after night. See, I don't have a right to be angry, yes I do. Now the thing that really bothers me, the same crowd that harassed me and put me through hell, now is wanting to take away my right of who I rent to and who I do not rent to. They're asking you to ta-, they're asking you to give them the right to, to take away my freedom. I lost my freedom when I was fourteen years old. And I'll tell you something, friends, yes, I'm bitter. And I'm bitter because some people today wants to take some more of my rights away, more of my freedom. And I hope you men will take real consideration of the decision that you're faced with today, of what you're gonna put a lot of people through. You better take a stand for what's right, for what's right. I'm not talking about what's spiritually right, and I believe it ought to be spiritually right, but I'm talking about what's right and good for the people of Kirksville, Missouri. Thank you for your time, thank you for letting me be here.
My name is Larry Groom. So has anybody seen a copy of this proposed ordinance besides the city council? I think it, uh, I thought about this before I came up here. So we're gonna have to pass this to find out what's in it. I've heard that before somewhere. Thank you for this opportunity, and, uh, freedom, I think, is what we're seeking. We're able to be here because of all people on earth, God has blessed and entrusted us with freedoms. So far, we're able, we're free to be able to say what we think. And those who desire to influence this esteemed council to make an ordinance can do so because they have the freedom to do so. I thank God for freedom. So far, I have the freedom to speak in opposition to laws that would steal by the force of law my freedoms. Ordinances such as these, I think, would do that. The First Amendment gives us the freedom of speech, press, religion, petition, and assembly. And I believe that one ordinance can lead to another, can lead to another, and continue on. I believe many homosexual groups seek to deny our freedom of speech. They would do so by limiting our freedom to voice our belief that homosexual sex is called by sin and God's, is called sin and by God's word. I don't seek to limit their freedom to believe and say what they believe, or to say the belief that they, they think I'm wrong. But they are, however, repeated, uh, there are repeated examples of people who have been fired simply for stating their beliefs. You read on the internet instances where, uh, people were fired at HP, at Kodak, at AT&amp;T, and on and on and on, just because they disagreed with the, the company rule that they had to promote the gay agenda, and they didn't want to. So they voiced their, uh, objection and they were fired. That's one result. And so I believe that they seek, these people seek to protect their rights while stripping us of our rights. I believe that the homosexual groups seek to deny my freedom of religion. They would do so by establishing laws that call preachers who proclaim the Bible's teaching about homosexuality as hate speech. They have done so already in Canada and other places, I'm sure. I believe that homosexual groups seek to deny my freedom to associate. They seek to force people to allow homosexuals to associate with specific people who believe to do so would be in violation of their strongly held moral and religious beliefs. I believe that I have the freedom to associate or not associate with whomever I choose. They seek to do these things under the banner of civil rights. But what they seek is not civil rights, uh, because being a homosexual is not, is a choice, not heredity. Researchers Peter Bierman and Hannah Bruckner from Columbia and Yale conducted studies that refute so-called proof studies that homosexuals are born and, uh, not from a later decision. Actually, earlier studies were shown to be flawed in methods, mistakes, and motives. Bierman and Bruckner basically concluded from their studies that no one is born homosexual. People can make false statements, but so far, we have the freedom to choose to not believe false statements, to not act on false statements about things that are not facts. But unfortunately, the children in our schools are being taught these things, and they don't have the ability or the freedom, in many times, to, to reject or to not know what's right. I think our nation's founders were guided and influenced by God, who fought and bled to establish our constitution. Our constitution is our guarantor of our great freedoms, and we must guard our constitutional freedoms with our lives. Freedom isn't free. Many thousands have suffered and died all over the world that we might experience these freedoms. Thomas Paine said, "We obtain too cheap what we esteem too lightly. It is dearness only that gives everything its value. Heaven knows how to put a proper price on its goods, and it would be strange indeed if so celestial an article as freedom should not be highly rated." In some ways, I think that, I thank those who are encouraging this council to adopt this ordinance. Not because I agree with it, but because by doing so, I think there's a lot of people here that wouldn't be here had they, had they not done this. And so it's good for us to, to consider these things and to debate them. And I'm really impressed with everybody. You've got a different clock than I do.
Hello, council members, um, my name is Jessica. You know, I've heard a lot of things tonight. I spoke two weeks ago, you've heard my piece, you know? The only thing I wanna remind everybody of is, uh, or rather, I feel moved to say it, is just, it is a fine thing to stand up for what you believe in. And I definitely have seen everybody here and people who have perhaps left already, who have spoken their mind and what they truly felt to be how they feel about this issue and about other issues, and that is awesome. You guys, you gentlemen, I apologize. You gentlemen are in a position to make a decision. What I'm asking you is, you've heard both sides, you've probably done your own research. All I'm asking is please consider these things with an open mind. For me, a lot of it didn't make sense until I made it personal. Like, for example, um, for those of you who have children, how would you react if your child, you know, came to you and was like, "I think I like girls," or "I think I like boys"? And I'm keeping it to homosexuality just because it's been talked about, so like, for this particular issue. Or what if your brother or sister came up and was like, you know, "I'm a strong believer in something, but this feeling is making me contradict that." You know, it, I know for my parents, um, it per, it definitely made them kinda think a little bit deeper about what they believe and why they believe what they do. They still uphold their beliefs, their beliefs, sorry. And I think that's awesome. And I think that's awesome. But what I'm saying is, you guys have your opinions, that's totally fine, we all have our opinions, but please, when you are addressing this issue, just keep an open mind about it. I would really encourage you guys to spend five minutes just thinking about the other side. I'm not saying you have to agree with it, I'm not saying that at all, but just think about the other side, 'cause it can help bring a lot of clarity to this issue. I would also very politely like to make the point that this issue of, as some would call the homosexual agenda, or whatever people wanna call it, that's fine, it's not gonna go away. I mean, times are changing, and you guys and all of us are gonna be faced with decisions in our, in our future and not our present, that are gonna challenge our beliefs and are gonna challenge us to stand up for what we believe in. So I just encourage us all to look at both sides and then make your decision. So thank you so much for this time.